Good evening. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting tonight, please complete a request to speak form. It's available at the front desk by the door. Present it to the City Clerk, and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. At this time, I will call to order and convene the City Council. And City Council is successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency, regular meeting of April 25th, 2017, City of Grand Terrace. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Father Andrew Lesko of the San Bernardino Sheriff's Department, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Doug Wilson. So, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. O heavenly King, the Comforter and Spirit of Truth, who are present everywhere and fill us all things, we thank you for all the benefits, both seen and unseen, that you have bestowed upon us and upon our city. Grant peace, oh Lord, to our mayor, City Councilmembers, and all civil authorities. Allow them to govern in peace so that we too may live in calm and serene lives in all piety and virtue. Furthermore, we ask that as we begin this meeting, you will grant us your wisdom, strength, patience, and understanding, so that whatever we may accomplish in the course of this meeting will be beneficial to us, the City of Grand Terrace, and to the glory of your name. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Reynares?
Present.
Councilmember Hesse?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Robles?
Present.
Mayor McInnes?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Our first item tonight is special presentation. We have a very special presentation for two families. And I will give the floor to Lieutenant Doug Wolfe of the Sheriff's Department.
Mayor, Council, members of the public, my name is Doug Wolfe. I'm a lieutenant with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, and one of my primary assignments is overseeing patrol operations for the City of Grand Terrace. I really feel honored recognizing a few of our citizens within the community. You know, Grand Terrace is a very, very safe city. It's one of the safest contract cities that we have within San Bernardino County Sheriff's grasp, and a lot of that is because of the tight-knit community that we have within Grand Terrace. And I see that often from our patrol deputies and their interactions with witnesses, victims, and even the suspects that they arrest within the city. They have a lot of respect for each other. But one of the things that I've seen throughout the year that I've been a part of Grand Terrace is that some of the trends in our crimes have gone up. Those trends being some residential and commercial burglaries, thefts of property, and of course, thefts of mail. These are things that we've really seen on arise, not just in Grand Terrace, but everywhere. And another thing that I monitor quite often is the Facebook and other social media that Grand Terrace is involved in, and I'm always very appreciative of the community working together to ensure each other's safety, watching out for each other, keeping an eye on each other's property, and so forth. And in some instances where they actually see something and they participate in trying to get, be a good witness, like getting a good vehicle description, getting a license plate if possible, and in some cases, they even go after the suspect, which we don't encourage, but it is happening. So, everybody needs to really know their limitations in regards to that, and we do not encourage it. But I really have the honor of being able to call down two families. One is the Broadway family, which is David, Michelle, Michaela. Can you come down, please? And we also have, I'm gonna mess this name up, just like I said, Emma Vista? Good enough? David? Oh, I'm sorry. Rosalia Samantha Richard? Can you come down, please? Thank you. So, the first incident we're gonna talk about is involving the Broadways. On March 27th, 2017, at about 11:30 in the morning, Mark Nida, who's not here with us today, was out of town. However, he has a Nest camera at his house, which is something we've talked about in the past. He got an alert on his phone that somebody was in his house, and he knew nobody was supposed to be home. So, he immediately looked at his phone, and he saw two strange males in his house ransacking his place. So, he immediately called 911. Well, we know what happens there. It's not always as fast as you would like it to be. The wife called the Broadways. The Broadway's who lived nearby was able to step outside, and sure enough, they saw two strange men walking out of the house, carrying property, into a white car that was parked near the residence. They were outstanding witnesses. They got a great description of that vehicle. The daughter, Michaela, broke out her phone, just like all good teenagers do, and began snapping pictures of this car. The car did not have license plate, but even better than that, it showed a good picture. I believe it was a yellow plate with black writing, which was a dealer plate. All of this information was relayed to the deputy, Deputy Spear, who responded and was on scene, was immediately relayed to him. The pictures were shown to him, and he immediately got that information out over the air, which at that time, because this is a great crime in progress, we had units responding from Loma Linda and the county. And we also had our airship responding overhead. So, as this was going on, this information went out to the two deputies coming down from Loma Linda. They were at the, in the area of Barton Road and Waterman, stopped at the stoplight. And who did they see coming directly towards them but a white car with a bright yellow plate with black writing, just as described by the witnesses? This vehicle made a left-hand turn and started heading northbound on Waterman. The deputies immediately took action. A traffic stop was conducted, suspects were detained, and all the property was recovered. Again, all of this could not have happened if we didn't have, one, good cameras in that house, which helped us notify the victim, as well as outstanding neighbors, and not just because they, they came out, of course they would come out, but that they developed a relationship with each other to take care of each other, just like I was saying earlier. So, all of that stuff is what really truly led to the success of that arrest, and we truly do appreciate it. So, we can give them a round of applause. And then the second incident, which happened on March 25th at about 3:20, 3, that's my military time coming into me here, at 3:22 PM, Rosalia heard something outside of her residence. It was, obviously, it was a vehicle noise that caught her attention. She looked out the window, and she saw a white suburban pull up to her mailbox, and she saw them stealing mail out of her mailbox. She and her daughter Samantha both took, went outside, and again, just like the Broadways, an outstanding witness, got a fantastic vehicle description, and what did the daughter do? Busted out her cellphone, began taking pictures, and it captured the license plate. Now, unfortunately, this license plate, this vehicle was cold-plated, meaning that it had another license plate on the vehicle, which concealed the true identity of that vehicle. So, the case went stale for a short time. After the deputy did everything that he could do with that case, he forwarded the detectives' division, where Detective Lara picked it up. He began working on it and reached out to our, one of our counterparts, Riverside PD, who made an arrest with a similar vehicle. He was able to take the, one of the pictures, because I forgot to mention, that they also, they got in their car and followed them, and took several pictures, and one of them captured a good facial picture of the gangster that was in the front seat, tattoos and all of the like. But we didn't have anything in our database to point us in any direction during that initial investigation. But Detective Lara was able to contact Riverside, find out who was arrested in that car during their mailthief caper, and he was able to compare the pictures, from the booking picture from Riverside, and the photo that Samantha took on her cellphone. So, again, without the effort of you guys being great witnesses, identifying the vehicle and capturing those pictures, chances are, we would, we would still have these guys running around. So, again, round of applause to them. I think I left the certificates up there, correct?
Yes, you did.
I guess David could not make it tonight? Well, this is for David. I'll hand that to you. Michaela?
I'm losing sense.
Station, we truly do appreciate your involvement in the community, taking care of your neighbors, and helping us take a little bit of bite out of crime. Without you guys, again, we could be still chasing these guys, and you guys helped find a successful resolution of the problem. Thanks again.
Before you sit down, please come back. We have some pins for you that are the City Seal, they're nice lapel pins, but also, two things is, I think the Council probably wants a chance to say a few words to you, and we can either do a photo op before or after. So, does it make sense to do the photo op while they're standing? And then we could have you have a seat while you hear all the nice things that we have to say to you. How's that? So, if you would come up here, and I'll invite my colleagues to come over as well. I know you both like your community and want to maintain a safety here, but it is something that you've stepped out of a comfort zone to actually witness what's been going on and then do something about it. And I think that is one of the nicest things about our community, is that we do have neighbors that are willing to get to know each other enough to truly be there to make a difference. And in some ways, people could have said, "Oh, I don't want to get involved. This could be dangerous. This could come back on me." But I don't think that you probably even gave that a thought, and that's one of the wonderful things about having you, both of your families here as part of this community, is you really do make this community special. And my thank you isn't enough, and the pin that we gave you isn't enough, but hopefully you'll, you'll see it as a small token of, of how much we do appreciate the leadership that you are showing in how we all in the community make a difference and can combat crime by doing the things that you did. So, thank you very much, and I will, I will turn this over to my colleagues as they probably have a few words they would like to say, and I will start with Councilmember Hesse.
Well, I concur with the mayor. Thank you very much for everything you guys did and stepping up to the plate. You said when you saw crime in progress, you know, and you said you're not gonna take that, you're gonna, let it be now, we're gonna try to catch the criminals. And that's what makes Grand Terrace a really unique community, 'cause you know, it's not, only residents are like one big happy family here, and wanna take care of each other. And I know, you know, we're, we're getting sick of the little low-quality crimes, you know, it might be somebody's mail, but it's gonna escalate in somewhere else, and then break it in the house, you know, we don't know if somebody has guns, and they're gonna use those guns for something else. But to sit up there and to be brave enough to do it, and then, you know, be recognized out here, you know, it's, it's a great honor for us residents and the city honoring you guys, and, and we're hiring at the federal prison, so if you, you know, wanna get a job there, just let me know. But once again, thank you, and I really appreciate it, you guys. God bless.
Mayor Protem Robles?
I also agree completely with the mayor's comments, and I want to thank you sincerely, all of you, for the efforts on behalf of this community. I think it's gonna be quite fascinating when people find out that they come over here and do something, the citizens themselves take care of it. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, more than a couple of hundred years ago, this country was founded on the idea that people looked out for each other. We were all kind of in the same boat, and obviously, we've lost a little bit of that, and there's a lot of reasons for it, and a lot of media attention to the, to the negative. You just, with your efforts, just made a difference in my life, so I appreciate it. I greatly appreciate it. And the more we think about it from this standpoint, the better it's gonna get. Congratulations.
Councilmember Reynares?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take a moment also to add my personal thanks and commendation to what both families did. If we had more people who were stepping up and looking out for their neighbors, getting to know and befriend their neighbors, we would see a lot more of this happening, and we would have a lot fewer issues with this petty crime. So, on behalf of the community and my family, I greatly appreciate what you guys did. And Michaela, if you're going to get a bachelor's degree, I have a couple of jobs for you, so come see me.
All right. Thank you. And one last thing to say, thank you for being here tonight so that we could share in the stories of what you did to help your neighbors. You know, you went above and beyond, and then coming here tonight and letting us share with you your honor from the Sheriff's Department. Thank you so much for that, and thank you again for being here. All right, we will move on to our consent calendar. The consent calendar items are expected to be routine and controversial, non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time. Without discussion, any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests at this time to remove an item from the consent calendar?
I'd like to discuss item four.
Okay. So, we will remove item four. Any others? All right, I will entertain a motion for the balance.
Motion for approval, Mayor. Second?
Please vote.
Madam Mayor, may I read a few resolution titles from the consent calendar?
I would, I would greatly appreciate it if you would.
Resolution of the City Council, the City of Grand Terrace, California approving the application for grant funds for California climate investments, urban greening program, and accepting if awarded said grant. Resolution of the City Council, the City of Grand Terrace, California approving a program supplemental agreement between the City and State of California Department of Transportation and authorizing the City Manager to execute said agreement. And that concludes the reading of the titles. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much. If you would, please vote.
Motion passes. Councilmember Reynares, Hesse, Wilson, Mayor Protem Robles, Mayor McInnes, voted aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, item four is the award of April 2017 Community Benefit Funds to Grand Terrace Youth Football and Cheer. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, the City Manager. The item the Council has to perform today, item number four, is approval of Community Benefits Grant of $2,000 to the Grand Terrace Youth Football for equipment and uniforms for the G-Force Flag Football Program. As the Council was aware, this is Community Benefit Fund was granted, has about $25,000 for the last two years individually for community benefits to help promote activities throughout the community. This grant, as said earlier, is for $2,000, and funds will be utilized, again, for funds to be used to purchase flag, flag equipment and jerseys for the program. With that, I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Hesse, do you have questions on this item?
Yes, Mayor. I'm just, a couple, I know we're, this is a great thing for the community as far as granting money and to help out our youth programs, but on the, is this program of 501A is a nonprofit organization?
Mr. Duffy?
That information is not here. What I can do is I can check back with Miss Fortune to see if that's the case.
Is that a requirement?
I don't believe that is a requirement.
Is it a requirement to be a nonprofit?
I don't believe it's a requirement to be a nonprofit.
That's why I want to know, then.
Doesn't look like that is an item on our application.
I can certainly go back and check it out, but I don't believe that is a requirement.
And I just wanted to know, you know, with the $2,000, you know, is it making, is it helping out these kids so the fees will be cheaper for them to participate?
Okay. And I think that, I think that's true, and I think what's happened in the past, when we did provide Community Benefit Fund grants, programs before, because we're, our leagues are intermingled with other communities, one of the ways which we had a problem was that the grant funds for the community was actually going, going towards others in the community. So, what they've done now is simply by purchasing the equipment, that will allow residents and grandchildren to do the program for cheaper.
All right, that's all I wanted to know. Thanks for clarifying it.
Would you like to make a motion on that item?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the award of $2,000 for the City Community Benefit Fund to the Grand Terrace Youth Football for equipment and uniforms for G-Force Flag Football.
I second that. All right. Please vote.
Motion passes. Councilmember Reynares, Hesse, Wilson, Mayor Protem Robles, Mayor McInnes, voted aye. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will go to public comment. This is an opportunity for members to speak on items not on the agenda tonight. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. It may also be that I request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, and may request the matter be agendized for a future meeting. At this time, I have one request to speak in front of me, and it's from Stephanie Estrada.
Good evening, mayors. Good evening, councilmembers, our community residents, and our law enforcement. My name is Stephanie Estrada, and I am a resident at 2249 De Berry Street. I am a medical assistant. I went to school at Riverside, a Riverside Medical Student College. I moved to Grand Terrace in October. I attended Colton Middle School, graduated from there. I attended Colton High School. As I was on my way to work, which is Brookdale Senior Living, I was walking. I'm a walker. I have a vehicle, but I'm a walker, 'cause this community, like everybody says, is great. Well, upon my walking, I noticed that there, with De Berry being such a busy street, I'm a little nervous right now, so bear with me, with De Berry being such a busy street and Mount Vernon being such an industrial street with all of our building, and our community growing from left to right, which is great, I kinda witnessed two students that were almost hit by vehicles. I paused for a second. I cried, only because I am a family member of a great grandmother who was killed in Fontana many years ago. She was on her way to get bananas for her morning walk. As I witnessed these two students, who by all means, we all were students once upon a time, seeking our education, seeking our goals, doctors, lawyers, City Council members, law enforcement, medical assistants like myself, had it not been the medical, actually, had it not been the crossguard who volunteered her time, I wouldn't be who I am today. So, my life in them started flashing before my eyes. I've been doing this for the past month, as of yesterday, volunteering to walk the students. Mr. Boggs at Terrace Hills Middle School wanted to meet me and wanted to know what my ideal was for this. I said, "I just want to make a notice as far as the help that this community needs." All our parents, all our bus drivers, our law enforcements, throwing up the peace sign, condoning us parents who have been volunteering. I don't even have kids. I just seen the need, and I put my, my mind forward. I started gaining family relationships with these students of motivation. Good morning. With our county going under, as far as kids fearing to go to school, we should never fear education. Education is our future. It is everything that we look forward to, to support our lives, our families, and who we are. It identifies us. And as I witnessed this, I couldn't sleep that night. I told my husband, "Since I go every day an hour around Grand Terrace into Berry, I need to stop and use my exercise to help these students who were fearing three weeks ago to even attend school." As I met the principal, he let me talk. He didn't understand why, but this is why. I was able to speak to a couple of students who left on this notebook, meanings to why education is very important. One that touched my heart was by a fourth grader who didn't even attend Terrace Hills Middle School. She would walk from the elementary school to Terrace Hills to sit and wait for her brother or sister until mom arrived. She wrote, "School is safety, and it is important, because parents might be sad if their kid dies." I, myself, three weeks ago, and our family, lost a mentally challenged, a mentally challenged crosser, high school student in Highland. It has torn my family apart. So, I refuse, in our beautiful community, to have these makeshift memorials for these students to be afraid to walk to school. This should be an encouraging movement for every single individual that can hear me at this point. We need to address this issue, assign crosswalks, assign blinking lights. Our students are our future. I cannot stress it enough. I've prayed and prayed, and he has donated our vests, our community leaders, our signs... I've prayed and prayed and he has donated our vests, our community leaders, our signs, our community people, our volunteers, our parents terrified that they have to cross now and day and age with all the prices of food and housing. Our parents have to work, both of them, so our students have to get up on their own and walk to school. And I thought I would bring it to our council members to kind of just give a little nudge to whoever it is that needs that to be addressed. Mr. Boggs totally supports it. His idea was the funding and I said, "In God we trust," and that's who we need to trust every day for our students. I'm going to close with, "In God we trust" and "We need to trust ourselves and our own tuition." I will be out there until that need is addressed, and I know a couple of our parents will be out there until that need is addressed, because our students are our future, our future council people, our future police officers, our future medical assistants, our future parents. Everybody here, once upon a time, was in third grade, fifth grade, tenth grade and twelfth grade. Thank you very much for giving me this time to speak.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Estrada, and I know that you came last meeting and you weren't able to speak during public comment, so I appreciate you coming back and I appreciate the time that you're spending. Mr. City Manager, I believe contact has been made at this point on this item, is that true?
Contact with the school district, yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during this time? All right, seeing no takers, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for their communications. We'll start with Councilmember Ryan Reynaros.
And more thanks are in order, I'd like to thank Ms. Estrada for her volunteerism. This is warming my heart tonight to see we have three instances in one meeting of people who are going above and beyond to try to make this a better place to live, and hopefully this can grow and grow and grow and spread. And before long, we'll have very minimal issues in Grand Terrace, so I really do appreciate it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Reynaros. Councilmember Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you once again for what you came out tonight and thank you for volunteering and helping with our community. Speaking of that, Saturday was Earth Day, so I'd like to thank all the volunteers who came out and picked up trash and helped make our city, you know, that much beautiful. It was, we got a lot of trash, you know, Barton Road, I mean, a lot of bottles and waste and it's amazing how much it all adds up, but you know, we also had a great turnout, we had the living, was it the?
Living Word?
Living Word Church out, the great, all the youth out there helping out, so that really helps out a lot when you have a lot of people there. Makes a day go by, you know, we could get a lot accomplished, I think we were out there for almost three hours or so, but Miss Fortune's husband was also with me, we had two young men plus myself and Mr. Spencer, but so we all had assigned areas, it was well organized. And I think we did a pretty good accomplishment, I'd like to thank the staff who came out there on their Saturday to do the work and truly appreciate it. One thing, I'll cut it down though, but I had a League of City meeting and I didn't present it last time because I forgot my notes and it was with San Bernardino County Sheriff's at the training academy with the county sheriff, John McMahon. And it's a lot of cover, but I'll break it down. Just the highlight is, the big thing is on immigration and what law enforcement can do, and I have some assembly bills that were presented. But he would like to make clear his department's legal obligation, immigration enforcement does a confusion on the topic. He understands the issues of immigration enforcement in our community and the impact to families and victims and witness of crimes. He is in fear of someone's immigration status to prevent them from reporting crimes, interacting with our deputies. He can assure patrol deputies do not participate in immigration enforcement. His department's primary responsibility is for safety of all individuals. However, he also believes that a person who commits crimes should be held accountable and face the legal consequences of the justice system. So that's just breaking it down, so I'm sure Lieutenant Wolf can go into if he had any questions. But to go over that, we talked about Assembly Bill one sixty-three and we talked about Assembly Bill nine fifty-three and we talked about Senate Bill fifty-four. Just highlight that, Assembly Bill nine fifty-three, this one is kind of, it kind of ties up the sheriffs, it's for data points and it's for, for, let me see, when the sheriff or deputies or any law enforcement come up to a scene, there's thirty data points and this is to make sure there's not any, I can't think of the word, racial bias on there. So they have to put, you know, race, gender, sex, why they got detained, what they're doing, so there's like thirty data points. Surely whoever wants to bring up the two hundred data points, I don't know, you're going to be sitting there all day filling out, the average is like fifteen to thirty minutes to fill out this form. And what really got me is even if the person, nine-one-one the victim, and the sheriffs respond to nine-one-one call, they still have to fill out this form. So it ends up tying up, they came up to like eighty-eight full-time deputy sheriffs for a year. So that's eighty-eight full-time deputy sheriffs that are taken off the street, helping to prevent, to fight crime, just for this data point thing. So that's going through, that's Assembly Bill nine fifty-three if you want to read up on it. Another one that kind of got my eye was Assembly Bill one sixty-three, this is for the school resources for police. Assembly member wants to have no school resources for the on-campus. Now, if there's an emergency or a shooting or something, yes, but I know we have a Colton Joint Unified School District, the school resource officers. And a lot of times those school resource officers are mentors, they might be a father or mother or helping the kids out and the kids look up to them. So, you know, and they could talk more one-on-one, so they're, this is, the assembly member's biggest fear is like we're making the campus into like a prison already with the law enforcement there. And I have seen the total opposite, my sons have been involved with, they graduated out of Colton High School and I know the resource officer there was a big influence on a lot of kids who had troubles and they, you know, they took them upon, so treated them like their own sons. So hopefully they'll do some tweaking on that. And the last one was, of course, Senate Bill fifty-four with Senator Leon. That was covering immigration status, when they questioned when the book, and the biggest thing was on, the sheriff's department used to have a forty-eight hour hold, I think they still have, if they had a deportation order from ICE. And so I work in a federal prison and we do have a lot of illegal aliens who were deported and came back into the country illegally. ICE is now looking for the ones, you know, the immigrant, the immigrant status, they're looking for somebody who has committed a felony and were deported and they came back, and then we usually, when I first started working in the Bureau of Prisons, twenty-five, almost twenty-six years ago, it was like two or three month sentence, now they're getting two years, because if you do read their record, you'll be amazed and you'll be like, well, it's not the mom and the pop thing that's going on. So they're trying to get this, State Assembly Bill, I think there are some things that went through from last time I talked about it. I think they took away the detainer, where they're trying to get rid of the detainer and they brought it back so ICE can be contact, because one of the bad things without doing that forty-eight hour detainer, when ICE comes to the jail and the person's released and they're going to ask, "Where was the person released at?" Well, now they're going to give the location of the residence or the location of their place of employment and now you have collateral damage, because now this is what you're seeing the raids on, on TV, it's not they're going out to raids to find like ten or fifteen people. They're walking in, they're looking after one other person, people just unfortunately have to be collateral damaged and they're getting arrested or deported. So that was some of the kinks on the Assembly, or Senate Bill fifty-four. So overall, you know, the sheriff, really personal guy, really good leader, I know he really loves his department and he's, his main concern is to take care of San Bernardino County and his men and women in uniform, you know, and their family. And, and like I said, once and besides again, you know, Grand Terrace is pro-law enforcement, we love the sheriff's department too, and you guys are doing an outstanding job. And I hope we can continue, you know, serving each other, but I know, you know, being that the world is changing, that we do have a lot of stuff happening. Even today, a police pursuit on TV and the guy ended up getting shot in Bellflower because he tried to run over a police officer. So, yes, we are the one to save the cities in the inland empire, but, you know, crime's right at our own back door and people are coming in. And I'm a person to be proactive instead of reactive and I like to continue seeing our sheriff's department grow here. I would love to see one we talked about before for the, you know, the two sheriffs and the traffic patrol, but you have an outstanding leader and it was an honor to meet him, Lieutenant Wolf, and and so if you guys want any information, you can email me and I'll send you the assembly bills and stuff that I looked at. There's a lot of legal stuff, probably Larry could break it down better than I can, but just quick, fast, and thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hesse, Councilmember Brian Reynaros? I already went, I already listened to you, right? Then how about Councilmember Doug Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Robles?
I first want to thank you for your efforts. I grew up in San Bernardino, so you know, Mill Street and was going to Richson Junior High, so the funniest thing is it was playing Dodge Car every morning and literally the second time I almost got run over, it was a Catholic priest. So it's just, and he was so upset, but you would think, people just don't pay attention, their mind is somewhere else. And for me, I was that kid, my mom was, you know, a widow, she went to work and I had to get myself there. And my favorite story is telling one of the neighbors, I always liked your dad because the Santa Ana winds would come and everybody had a parent to pick him up except me. One time, I guess I was all blown around and everything, so he picked me up, another time it was all wet. And then, I'm going to take some time here. Because it reminds me, I grew up in a neighborhood where we all knew each other and, which is rare nowadays too, but the, the funny thing is I used to walk to church too, so I used to walk to Guadalupe. And this friend of mine that I still know who's like seventy-something and we still call him Davy. And he says, "Yeah, my mom used to, parents, well, he used to have you in high esteem because he used to walk to church every Sunday." And I used to think, "Why didn't you give me a ride?" And he says, "'Cause there's no room in the car." But, you know, it just, you just would make me think about how appreciative it is for someone to step forward. You know, I had a niece that would also be at a bus stop and on Mill and Mount Vernon. And it turns out my father-in-law lived near that corner, so he would stand every morning to watch her get safely on the bus because he had witnessed a man harassing her. So it's just really important, the things that people do to make life just safer for everybody, and all of you are doing that. And it just reminds me of how I grew up and I really, really value that and I'm pleased. The only thing I have to say is I'm a trans administration committee mat and we went over some budget targets that we sent forward to the full board. So that will be developing and I'll report that as that shapes up and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. On April twelfth, I was at the General Policy Committeeing for the San Bernardino County Transit Authority. We had a very light agenda that day, which was kind of nice. That means we're probably not spending quite as much of our Measure I funds, perhaps. So administrative matters, we, on the consent calendar, were receiving file reports for February and March twenty-seventeen procurement and Measure I receipts for twenty-ten through twenty-forty. We also had discussion items for administrative matters. And we recommended that the board approve changes to the debt policy. Most of those changes have to do with the name change that the organization is going through, since they changed the actual structure of their organization from Sandbag to San Bernardino County Transit Authority. We did receive, we recommended receive and file on estimated insurance premiums for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. Recommended approval of pay schedules for compliance with California Code of Regulations as required by the California Public Employees Retirement System. We recommended award of contract for information technology consultant support services. In other words, the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority is considering network, information technology network support services with the city of Brea and their IT staff, much like we have our IT support provided for the city of Loma Linda. So that's not an odd, an odd issue that we have, it apparently is not uncommon to have cities who contract out their IT solutions, which is kind of interesting. We reviewed and provided comments on proposed San Bernardino County Transportation Authority Administrative Code. We recommended the board authorize a release of Transportation Development Act. Article three, call for projects on the following two programs, and one of them was pedestrians and bicycle facility projects, and the other one was transit stop access improvement projects. We recommended the board receive the April twenty-seventeenth legislative updates and also that they authorize the executive director to execute a letter of agreement to loan up to fourteen million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand of federal transit administration apportionment to Orange County Transportation Authority in fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. The Orange County Transit Authority would then make a repayment of congestion mitigation and air quality apportionment to occur in the federal fiscal year of twenty eighteen nineteen. On Tuesday, the eighteenth, the staff had set up a tour with the administrators for consideration of our Blue Mountain Trailhead site that there's been a grant applied for to create that trailhead and to connect to the trails. So I got to take part in that meeting, we showed them a, not just the trailhead, but, you know, you see a nice little trailhead off of observation and it's just kind of an empty field and they really needed to see why people would want to come to this empty field in a different manner and what the value and what the attraction was. So they, they were escorted up the mountain by a couple of members of the sheriff's department and they really enjoyed what they had to see. And I think they stayed a little bit longer than they planned, so hopefully that doesn't count against us. Anyway, it was a very nice tour that the staff set up. On Thursday of last week, the city manager and I met with Mayor De La Rosa and city manager Bill Smith of Colton. It was one of, one of, I hope to be a few meetings where we talk about issues that are common to Colton and projects that perhaps we can move forward to in the future that would benefit both communities. And as issues take shape, of course, any project idea that starts to look like it's going to be more than an idea would come to this body and we would, we would determine whether it was something we wanted to move forward with. But I think it was a really good initial meeting and we look to have a follow-up meeting in about a month. And then lastly, I did attend Grand Terrace Cleanup Day, I want to thank the Foundation of Grand Terrace, Keep Grand Terrace Clean and Beautiful Committee members, they are a hundred percent volunteers in that organization. So they coordinated a very nice event, reaching out to community members who wanted to come together for this type of a project. And that's really the nice thing about the community is there are so many different ways that people can approach supporting the community. It was a very nice day, very well coordinated, very warm, so I will take points off for that if they could have just gone for a little bit better temperature, so maybe the next one. I also want to thank city staff for their support of this event because they were very supportive in a number of ways. One of them was actually going and picking up the bagged trash and helping to remove that. So again, thank you to city staff for their support and the time that they spent. And I also will thank our assembly member Reyes for coming out in the morning and picking up her bag full of trash. She was the first one to turn hers in, setting the standard, I didn't realize it was a, it was a contest, but she made it fun. Anyway, I appreciate her taking the time, I know she had a number of events that she, she attended that day, so it was nice that she started here first in her home city. And that will end my comments for tonight. So we will move on to item E on our agenda, which is public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight. So to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a request to speak form and give it to our city clerk. Each person will be allowed three minutes to address the city council. If you challenge and court any action taken concerning a public hearing item, you may be limited to raise only those issues you or someone else has raised during the public hearing described in this notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. We will progress in the following format. We will open the public hearing, we will have written communication if any. City council will have questions of staff, comments, applicant's comments will come- City council will have questions of staff, comments, applicant's comments will come next, and they are not limited to three minutes. There are an opportunity for members of the public to speak in favor or opposition of the item. Those comments will be limited to three minutes. If there is any need for rebuttal, the applicant will have an opportunity to do so, and again, will not be limited to three minutes. The public hearing will be closed, and the city council will come back for deliberation. So I understand our city attorney would like to say a few words. Would you like me to open the hearing first?
I'd probably make the, say a few words first.
All right.
Yes, and actually, it just patches into what you just got finished saying. I just, from a legal perspective, the hearing that you're going to have tonight, a revocation hearing, is a quasi-trudicial, uh, hearing, and it is important that, um, that as you go forward, we give due process or fairness to, to all those involved. The, um, staff, after the staff report, you have an opportunity to ask questions, as you all know, but it's not a time to make comments or give opinions until after you've heard all the evidence and after the public hearing. So the questions that are asked is usually to get a clarification of what the presentation, if you had questions about it. And then after the public hearing is closed, then that would be the time to debate and deliberate and, and to give your opinions. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Is there any written communication on this item? No, okay. So we do have a staff report. Would you please give us a staff report, Ms. Molina?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, thank you. My name is Sandra Molina, I'm the Planning and Development Services Director for the City of Grand Terrace. And, um, as indicated by the mayor, this is a public hearing. The, uh, public hearing is proposed to be held, is being held with regard to Administrative Conditional Use Permit, zero five zero seven, pursuant to our zoning code, which regulates conditional use permits and administrative conditional use permits. Um, and Madam Mayor, members of the council, the staff report is, is a quite lengthy staff report, there's a number of attachments, but as I reference those attachments, I'll also provide the packet page for the council. We also have present in the audience, um, from the Fire Department, Joe Zaccario, who could also provide any responses that the council may have. I do want to let the council, let them be aware that we did provide public hearing notice to the property owner, the business owner, and properties within three hundred foot radius. We also, and we sent those notices via certified mail. We also hand-delivered the packet to the business owner and property owner. The business owner is not present and does not have a representative here, neither does the business owner. But, um, when those packets were delivered, uh, they, it was made clear that there was going to be a public hearing this evening. So with that, I will, I will continue on with my presentation. So CB Tires is a used, or waste tire recycling business, they're located at two one eight zero one Barton Road. The, uh, CB Tires has an administrative conditional use permit, which allows them to accept tires, waste tires, and transport them to other vendors, or, um, a lot of the tires go to the Mitsubishi plant up in Lucerne. The, um, the operation is regulated by the California Department of Resources, Recycling and Recovery, referred to as CalRecycle. The representative for CB Tires, who was present at a couple of the commission meetings and not present today, is Mr. Tony Tejeda. The administrative CUP was subject to several conditions of approval. Um, amongst them is a condition that restricts tires on the ground to no more than four hundred and ninety-nine, and requires compliance with local, state, and federal regulations. So, um, the, the city became aware through the Fire Department that CalRecycle was conducting inspections of CB tires due to, uh, excessive number of tires, and so code enforcement also began their code case on the matter. Ultimately, based upon staff's review, uh, and the code requirements that regulates administrative conditional use permit, we, we presented this item to the Planning Commission on February second, and the packet for that meeting begins on stamp page fifty-four. So the purpose of that meeting is to provide the commission the information we have with respect to the conditional use permit, how they've been operating, and the commission at that time determined that a full public hearing was warranted, so they set the public hearing for March sixteenth, which was subsequent, subsequently continued to April sixth. But at March sixteenth meeting, uh, Mr. Tejeda wasn't present, but he had representatives, Ms. Furman and Mr. Valdiva were at the, uh, March sixteenth hearing that was open and continued, and then also they were present at the April sixth meeting. The, uh, staff report for April sixth is, uh, contained in the packet pages eighty-nine through two hundred and forty-six, and it's, it's a lengthy staff report. At the, at the hearing, uh, the commission voted to recommend to the city council that the city council consider revocation of the administrative conditional use permit. These are just a few pictures. This particular aerial is about, um, somewhere between March and June of two thousand and sixteen. This is from Google Earth, uh, just in February, so you can see the amount of tires has increased. These are just some aerials with dates stamped on them, February first, March fifteenth, April sixth, and our code enforcement also did a visual inspection today, and the tires are substantially the same as what you see here. So, um, in revoking a conditional use permit, these are the findings that need to be made, that the conditional use permit is in violation of condition of approval, or violates federal, state, or local law or ordinance. Um, and so the remainder of my staff report would go through the process of giving the council the information that the commission was given with respect to violation of conditional use permits in, uh, federal, state, and local laws. The staff report contains CalRecycle's report, which is packet pages one twenty-five to two twenty-eight. CalRecycle has conducted four inspections, and so they conducted inspection in April, and in May, and August, and each time they're in violation, the number of tires have fluctuated between fifteen thousand, twenty thousand, thirty, thirty thousand, so they fluctuate from time to time. Um, but they are in excess of the four hundred and ninety-nine, and so in September of two thousand and sixteen, CalRecycle issued a cleanup and abatement order to CB Tires. And that, that order said, "You have to become compliant, but more than that, you have to go down to zero tires on the ground." And on October fifth, CalRecycle did a fourth inspection, and they're not compliant with that order, and so CB, excuse me, CalRecycle is currently in the process of continuing their actions that they take to, uh, obtain compliance. Our code enforcement division also provided a report that's provided, um, starting on stamp page two twenty-nine, and that report identified the conditions of approval that apply to the project, and also provided information with respect to the inspections, and then with respect to those conditions where they are and are not compliant. They determined that, uh, CB Tires is not compliant with condition number one, which limits the tires to no more than four hundred and ninety-nine on the ground. They were also non-compliant with CalRecycle's state requirements regarding the regulation of waste tires, and not compliant with, uh, local laws. The, uh, since, since the code enforcement began their inspections in July, the operator has continuously been cited for non-compliance. And the business, excuse me, the property owner is also being cited for allowing that non-compliance to continue. The last inspection onsite that was done was on March fifteenth, which again went through the conditions and determined the continued non-compliance. Samuel County Fire Department also went out and did inspections. So there's a condition on the use permit that requires the operator to obtain a hazardous waste generator or hazardous waste handler permit, if it's required. The Hazardous Materials Division did go out and do an inspection and determined that wasn't required. We also had inspection done by our Community Services Division. And our Community Services Division of the Fire Department went out to inspect the site with, with respect to the fire codes that this business is subject to. And that inspection report is on page, starts on page one forty-seven, but they determined that CB Tires is not consistent, excuse me, is not complying with fire codes. They have excess of tire storage, uh, they have improper tire separation, improper setbacks, and, uh, the way the tires are on the site limits access, um, onto the property and to the stacks by fire vehicles. At the April sixth Planning Commission hearing, Fire Marshal Adam Panos was there, and he did respond to the commission's questions. He provided testimony, testimony with respect to, should those tires catch fire, how they would address the firefighting activities. And he also indicated that one of the hazards with respect to fire of those waste tires is that the potential for contamination, contaminated water that runs off from firefighting activities, and so that was also presented at the April sixth hearing. Samuel County Fire, excuse me, Samuel County, um, Department of Public Health, Mosquito and Vector Control Division did go out there on April fourth and determined that there were mosquitoes breeding, mosquitoes breeding, um, in the water that was captured in the waste tires, and in a, there was a tarp on, on site that also had water captured that was breeding mosquitoes. So they were issued a notice of violation, and a follow-up inspection was just done recently, and, uh, the water that was, that could be observed is gone, but the operator continues to sort through those tires and remove any water they come across, so the wires get, get caught up in the tire wells. The city's municipal code does grant the council the authority to conduct a public hearing and revoke a CUP if it violates those items up, uh, listed on the bulletin, which would, which, um, includes violation of the conditions of approval or local law ordinance. The staff report identifies that the business has ongoing violations with respect to the conditions of approval. It's also in violation of local fire codes, health codes, and state laws. Uh, the staff report also indicates, and it's also in the resolution, that the, the business is detrimental to health and safety, and it is a public nuisance. The findings are contained in the resolution, which is stamp page two hundred and fifty-two, and in that, uh, findings that the, excuse me, that the council would consider making, uh, identifies how these violations and the detriment to health and safety is being presented by this ongoing non-compliance. So with that, I would conclude my presentation by recommending that the council continue the conjunction of this public hearing this evening, and then consider adopting the attached resolution where the commission recommended revocation of the administrative CUP. And with that, I'll be happy to respond to questions the, the council may have.
Thank you, Director Molina. At this time, are there any questions of staff? Councilmember Hussey, and then Councilmember Reynars.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is probably for the Fire Department. The Fire Marshal is, you know, you said he, um, mentioned about the fire, with the hazards, with that big, uh, mountain of tires, do they kind of got to estimate how long the fire would burn, and what's the radius, and what the evacuation order would be on that for them? Did you guys discuss that?
Councilmember Hussey, that specific question didn't come up during the commission meeting, but, um, the fire representative here can respond to the question.
Okay. And I can defer to the team. As far as the tactics for fighting the fire, Chief Jager is suppression, I'm from the prevention side, I'm basically your fire marshal for this area. I did send my inspector out, and it appears that there's probably close to seventy-five to a hundred thousand tires there, based on the, the photos that my inspector took. So something that extensive is going to present quite a large fire hazard, especially because they have the excessive pile height, the excessive pile storage, the, the fire code limits the physical dimensions on the piles, and then it requires separation between the piles. So if one pile does catch on fire, for whatever reason, it will limit the spread to the next pile, and gives us more opportunity to fight fire. And then you also have the requirements for, uh, separation from property line, so again, fire doesn't spread as quickly to the adjoining properties, and it gives us access to get in. But as far as fighting the fire, how much, um, fire would develop? Would you like to?
Sure. Please, please state your name for the record.
My name is Gary, I'm one of the battalion chiefs for this area.
Thank you.
So it has in regards to your ques, uh, to your question, it would be a large firefight with that many tires, it would be an extended period of time, and it would take a multi-jurisdictional response, uh, which would mean twenty, twenty-five, thirty, forty engines, uh, for that type of fire fully rolled out. Not only would we be concerned about the actual tires on fire, but the surrounding, uh, occupancies and the commercial buildings would definitely be one of our largest concerns.
So it'd be a quite significant radius for evacuation, especially with the elementary school that'd be affected by it also?
Yes, yes. Especially with that many tires on fire, yes, that would definitely be a concern, because the way that those fires burn, especially the tires, and the chemical release from them, that would be significant, and we would definitely do a larger evacuation area.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Councilmember Hussey? Okay. Councilmember Reynars, and then Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you. This is for Director Molina. Has there been a communication back and forth with, with the business owner? What is his response to all of these sites and fines and all of this activity?
Yes, we, we did have a conversation with the business owner, um, back in April, April and March, so, um, after the March second, excuse me, the February second, uh, meeting that the commission held, I had a subsequent meeting with, um, Mr. Tejeda. At the time, he was indicating to the commission that he wanted to modify his business plan and bring a shredder onto the property that would slice the tires, and then he could dispose of them at the landfill. They're not, he's not able to dispose them if they're whole and intact. I met with him, and with regard to the shredder, we were having a conversation about a temporary shredder to at least shred the tires, become compliant, but, um, he then wanted to pursue bringing on a shredder onsite permanently. And the discussion we had at that time was that staff would not be in a position to evaluate and make a recommendation for section expansion until he became compliant. Because it, it was important to demonstrate compliance first, before we would want to intensify the use, um, and allow more tires, because he would then have more tires coming onto the site. We had a subsequent discussion where, uh, Mr. Tejeda was asking if the city had any grant opportunities to assist him with either purchasing the shredder, because the shredder is, is a couple hundred thousand dollars investment, or if we had any grant opportunities to assist him with cleaning up the site. At the Planning Commission meetings, Mr. Tejeda had indicated that, um, that, um, what, what happens is that he, 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 uh, delivers tires to the Mitsubishi plant in Lucerne, so he's transporting tires to them, he has a commitment to deliver tires. He also picks up tires from other facilities and delivers them to the Mitsubishi plant. The plant will shut down from time to time, but there's no, appears to be no backup plan, and so we have gotten to where we're at today, but the, the conversations that Mr. Tejeda would have with the commission was that within four to six week time, given the amount of tires he can take to the Mitsubishi plant, that he would be compliant, or very close to compliant. But from the February second meeting to the, uh, April sixth meeting to the March sixteenth and the April sixth, he didn't demonstrate that he brought the tires down significantly, uh, for whatever reasons, the plant would stop accepting tires again. So, uh, I apologize for the long response, but yes, we have had conversations with the business owner, uh, but we haven't yet seen, um, significant progress towards becoming compliant.
Has he rectified the citations?
No, the citations are approximately thirteen thousand dollars at this time, uh, has not made any payments towards the tires, citations, but, um, the business owner, excuse me, the property owner is being cited as well, and they are making, uh, they are paying the citations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Can I have the battalion chief come back up again? Just got, just have a couple of two or three questions, because I'm a novice in relation to some of these things. Is it your understanding that, uh, you or the, either the Fire Department on behalf of the city, or the city has an emergency police power to be able to take care of an immediate hazard? To life?
I am not aware of that, as a B.C., but... No, as the fire prevention, we would not take action on the hazard, we would cite and the, and take... We would cite and the, and take action to mitigate the hazard by way of making the occupant or the business owner rectify the situation. So if we had a situation in a business where the exit doors were blocked, we could take action and say, move that, move that stuff out of the exit path, unchain the doors, whatever the situation is. Something like this, we have been giving him notice of violations, and he has been working towards it. Unfortunately, it's been very slowly.
Can you tell me how, thank you, how hot would a fire like this burn? I know you guys know these temperatures like the back of your hand.
That would be, it would be extremely hot. We're pushing temperatures of 1,000 to 1,200 degrees.
Thousand to 1,200 degrees.
Paper burns at 451 degrees Fahrenheit.
Great, you're educating me, and I really need to know these things. How about the gas that is released from the fumes from a, this type of a fire? They've had a whole bunch of them over in Los Angeles, so I'm sure you guys have been talking to each other.
There's a lot of different, because tires are made from hydrocarbons and oils and petrochemicals, there's a lot of hazardous materials and hazardous gases and toxins that are released when tires burn. And then, so our biggest concern when we're talking about evacuations is the wind plume. When the smoke goes up, the wind is blowing, it's going to blow that plume smoke a certain distance away, and depending on how high the winds are, it'll keep it down low.
Okay, so I'm asking the right person. And prevailing winds being north and south, do we have a danger of possible infiltration down to the residences or even the businesses?
Absolutely.
Especially if this would be a six or seven day fire, because these things smolder? Last question. Any chance of spontaneous combustion?
The chance for spontaneous combustion would be low. Spontaneous combustion needs something to generate heat, and the tires themselves are not going to generate the heat, unlike a haystack or a mulch pile, where the organic compounds are degrading and breaking down, and it self-generates the heat.
Gotcha, so these break, these break down too slow to worry about that part of it. Well, that's one good thing.
I was gonna say, if there was an outside source of ignition from mechanical equipment, if they were doing any type of maintenance, welding, things like that, to the possibility of somebody smoking or igniting something.
Thank you. I will remind the council that we had a fairly spectacular fire about a couple of two or three years ago, and they just demolished the building with Caltrans down in the same kind of neck of the woods. So it's not unheard of. Thank you, that's all I needed to know.
Mayor Protem, do you have questions of staff?
I have a question, and this is probably for Director Molina, but it could be for our Fire Marshal. In the CUP, we have the magic number of 499 tires. Why is that the magic number?
That's the, CalRecycle has different types of licenses for a minor and a major. This is not per CalRecycle standards, a minor or a major permit. It's even less than that, it's just a collection facility.
So what's the difference in having 499 tires on a site for any length of time versus having twice that number? What difference in mitigation would need to be in place? And what mitigation is needed for 499 tires to ensure that we don't have a hazard of fire, or we don't have a hazard of breeding grounds?
The fire code limits the pile size, and it limits it to, we gave them a nice little diagram. So they can have not more than 50 foot in width, and it gives them a certain quantity based on the height, a total cubic foot of volume of the tires, which would be much more than 499. I saw that on the original CUP, and I don't know, I wasn't involved back then, so I don't know why they picked that number. That was something in the city. But we, out of the fire code, would allow a much greater number.
Okay. And the fire code is written in such a way to maintain the tires in those sizes and shapes of stack, for what purpose?
To minimize the spread of the fire. So besides the pile dimensions, we also have the separation.
Right, as you mentioned earlier, okay.
Right, the 20-foot separations, the 50-foot separations, and that gives you the, basically it gives you time. If the fire is in one pile, it is a time before it spreads to the next adjacent pile.
Okay, so the size of the pile has to do with the spread of it as well. All right, that's my only question. Thank you so much. Councilmember Hesse has a question.
This is for Ms. Molina. You mentioned that the owner said something about helping them out with a grant. My question is, I know, I mean, we all done it, we bought tires and had to pay a disposal fee. Wasn't the state of California bill to, are supposed to pay so much to help out with that? Disposable, the correct way of the tires? I mean, what's the standard operating procedure? I know it's not just make the big old pile mountain right there. Because if the owner's looking for money, wouldn't that be part from the state on the disposal fee?
I'm not familiar with any programs, but I haven't researched any programs that might be available to the business operator. His request was whether the city would have grant opportunities directly, or if we would help him by applying for grants for him. And so he was asking for a bit more of resources from staff. But with regard to your question specifically, Councilmember Hesse, we did not do that level of research for him.
Well, I don't, yeah, because he's asking the city, and I think it's a state problem. They're the one collecting the fee, and our residents be earning money for his, helping him out on the grant thing. That's why I'm just asking, they had the disposal fee, wanted to be directed to the state.
Sir, if I might just add, the state would most likely not provide him with any sort of grants while he's out of compliance. He's already, I believe, he owes the state $140,000 in fines for being out of compliance.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions of staff? All right, seeing none, is there anybody here representing Mr. Tejeda or CB Tires that would like to speak during this time?
No, no requests to speak.
Okay. So then, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing no takers. There's no necessity for rebuttal, so I will close the public hearing, and I will come back to council for their deliberation.
Mayor, I move a resolution, the City Council, City Grant Terrace, revoking administrative condition, use permit 5-07 pursuant to section 18.84.070, revisions and modifications, and section 18.83.080, revocation of the Grand Terrace zoning code. A second.
All right, there's a motion and second. Any final words? Please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Reynard, Hesse, Wilson, Mayor Protem, Robles, Mayor Magna Bill, voted aye. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. City Attorney.
For the record, I'd like to say that the decision of the City Council night is final, and that, and is subject to California Code of Silver Procedure Sections 1094.5 and 1094.6.
All right, thank you, sir. We will move on to new business. Item eight on our agenda is award contractor agreement to pavement coatings company for street slurry seal project. Mr. Alan French, Public Works Director, may we have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I'm Alan French, Public Works Director, City Engineer for the city. Coming to you for this item. This is for the award of the capital project year one, Slurry Seal Improvement Project. This staff report states that we support the 2030 goals. Number two, maintaining public safety for this project. This is the first of the capital improvement project back in November 25th, November 15th, 2016. City Council approved the capital improvement program to improve the city streets. It's a five-year program that's based on the pavement management system that was put The rating of the streets were based on a Street Saver program, which recommended the improvement for the five-year period. And it starts with most efficient use of the money first to get the most out of the projects by preventing further deterioration of the pavements. So the first-year project is a slurry seal project, and we had bid that back in February, actually, we went out for bids in March. We received the bids, and there were three bidders. Two of the bids were over our budget, and one was way under, but it was a non-responsive bid. So we asked the council to reject the bids and authorize the staff to rebid the project. That same action, we changed the type of material to a standard slurry 2 versus a more rarely-used material. We opened the bids on Monday, 17th of April. There were four bidders. And as you can see, the low bid was for pavement coatings with a bid amount of $624,620.31. We checked on the firm's references, and we received positive feedback from their past All their submittals to date were acceptable, and we are considering that a good bid, a The scope of work for this slurry seal project will include repairing localized failures in the streets, repairing some of the curb and gutter that are along those streets, and applying the Type 2 slurry, and finishing with the restriping of whatever stripes were there. They'll repaint those, or replace them with thermoplastic, if that's what was there before. So the staff is recommending to award the contract to pavement coatings company for $655,851.33, which includes the bid plus a 5% contingency for unknowns in the field that may occur. We are asking for the council to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and change orders should they come up. And we're also asking for the council to appropriate the gas tax and measure I monies with the maintenance of efforts funds to cover the $800,000 that was budgeted for And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
Thank you, Director French. Does council have any questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing none. Do we have any requests to speak on this item? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Wilson.
I'd just like to say that I'm overjoyed in the fact that we are closer to what we're supposed to be, and that is draw on a small circle around numbers. That's, you know, that was our goal, and I'm glad that you're here, and I'm glad that that's what's taken place, because that's the way it really should work, if everybody understands the job, and especially if it's a properly-written scope of work. The only question I have is, is this a, considered a lump sum bid, basically, or is it all field-measured? I know they field-measured it before they did the bid, but is this considered pretty much a lump sum unless something changes?
Yes, sir, Councilman. We would consider a lump sum type bid.
Super-duper. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, seeing none, I will ask for public comment on this item. And I see no takers, so I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we award a contract agreement to pavement coatings company for street seal project and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and any change orders up to the amount specified in the agenda report.
Madam Mayor, if I may, Councilmember Wilson, if you see on slide right up there, the third bullet point, we also would need the appropriation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oops. And approve appropriations from gas tax and measure I with maintenance of efforts funds to cover total $800,000 budget for the project.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mayor, motion passes. Councilmembers Hesse, Wilson, and Reynard vote yes. Mayor Protem votes yes, and the mayor votes yes.
Thank you. We will move to item nine, which is an update ordinance for revocable encroachment permits. Once more, Director French from Public Works. Please give us a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Councilman Alan French, Public Works Director. Staff report supports the 2030 goal number one, ensure our fiscal responsibility viability, In this slide, this is the revocable encroachment permits item, and in this slide, we see road right-of-way in a general sense with pavement, the center line, and then the pavement, curb and gutter lines, and then the area beyond to the property line, which is the parkway where the sidewalk is. In some areas of the city, we have sidewalk adjacent to the curb, and some areas, it's at the right-of-way. The encroachment permits are required for any work within the two red lines, the property lines. Anytime applicant is putting in a new driveway or planting grass, they're supposed to pull an encroachment permit for that work. And structures are typically not allowed in that area. In May, the city had reaffirmed its position, not allowing structures in the right-of-way. But after additional inquiries from residents, and additional consideration, council asked staff to revisit the topic. This view here is the sidewalk is at the right-of-way, but there's a tree planter within the parkway. So a permit, if allowed, would have been issued for that. However... However, that, at this point, is not acceptable and wouldn't have been allowed. But from research throughout the state, I have found that many cities have this issue, where they have residents wanting to beautify the front of their property and spend some money on those improvements. We came up with a process to do that, which is called a revocable encroachment agreement, or revocable encroachment permit. To do that, we had to, we would have to update the ordinance verbiage to include the revocable These are encroachments, again, that are not permitted. The way the process would work, an applicant would come in for an encroachment, they would submit the application, the permit, staff would review the permit and determine if it's permitted in the right-of-way, then the permit would be issued. If it is not a permitted proposal, a proposed structure, it would not be permitted from the encroachment permit, but the revocable permit process would then start. At that time, submittal, additional submittal information would be required, including structural information, design, maps, perhaps grading plans, additional calculations, perhaps clearances from utilities if there were suspected conflicts. So that, with that additional information, then we would review it as a revocable encroachment permit. That would include site visit as well. Should those items be satisfied, your revocable permit could be issued, and the applicant could move on and do their construction. If there were any of those items that were not satisfied, whether they're obstructions, site distance issues, or utility conflicts, we would not issue the revocable encroachment permit. That's what the ordinance would spell out. And there is one issue, I run a correction on the packet that you have on page three-thirty-eight, the last paragraph, within the parentheses, the referenced section twelve-point-one-oh should read chapter twelve-point-one-oh. Other than that correction, at this time, staff is recommending that council find the ordinance is categorically exempt from the SEQA review pursuant to SEQA guideline section one-five-three-zero-one, class one, and introduce the ordinance to amend the section twelve-point-oh-four-oh-six-oh and add chapter twelve-point-one-oh revocable encroachment permit. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right, thank you, Director French. Does council have any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Wilson.
Is this not a half of an ordinance that we're now trying to create here? Because let me ask you this, is, at the time that the, I would imagine, county of San Bernardino, County of Riverside had somewhat parallel timeframes. And at one time, the city of Grand Terrace was in the county of San Bernardino. And at that time, was, as far as your knowledge is, wasn't the county of San Bernardino, any obstruction within a public way? Was it illegal then? Within the public way?
The public right-of-way is
It was illegal?
Yeah.
Right. Okay, then, so it wasn't allowed under county code, it's not allowed under city code currently. And now what we're looking to do is to city to rubber stamp a bunch of bad design and bad, you know, installations so that we don't have to go through the pain and torture, as it says here. Let's see, significant potential savings that could exceed hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees and risk avoidance. The problem is, though, as you pointed out in your staff report, that not all are going to be approved, which means now we've got a rat's nest. And when we, when we don't do a half of ordinance, and we have a specific ordinance that says you can't put it in the way, in other words, don't put a rock in the road unless you want some drunk to run into it, you know, now we've got a half of ordinance that's going to be held up to maybe even court situations, just depends on how bad the person wants to keep their tree in the middle of the sidewalk. Plus, of course, as you pointed out, we've got dry utility interferences that could get really nasty and ugly. And then I guess, to me, this is a non-conformant situation, it just breeds a huge liability for the city and no possible advantage for the city. That's it. That's all I know. Can you think of any advantage to the city?
Well, sir, what, in the cities that utilize this, again, as I stated, typically, it's in an area where the resident, it's always a residential development type, want to improve the frontage of their homes and want to expend money to beautify that. That, in that respect, of course, we don't want to put any obstruction in the right-of-way, but typically, this happens with the sidewalk at the curb line. Because when the sidewalk's at the right-of-way, nobody ever constructs beyond that, so they're all set at the back, and that's the best way. When the sidewalk is along the curb, people want to build right behind the curb.
Yeah, people want to build a spike fence in between their neighbor, I get it. Okay, so then, apparently, our best guess is to review this in relation to a possibility that infringement like that or encroachment like that might be, from a beauty standpoint, okay. But any other kind of physical impediment could be, you know, a real enforcement issue as well as a real danger to the community at will.
If it's far enough away from the street and not in a line of sight, you know, there really isn't a big issue of people driving over the sidewalk to hit something.
Okay, the only thing I can see that could be contrary to that is, there's a reason why we're fixing all the sidewalk. That's in a public way. We're fixing the sidewalk because people use skateboards and they walk, and if they fall over it, they skin their noses, and people like me who can't seem to stand up straight, crash and burn. And that becomes a public liability. And so for me, just personally, and I guess as a council member, I see it, no advantage whatsoever going past any kind of maybe an aesthetic sort of encroachment. Okay, thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, so there are really a couple of reasons why we're proposing this particular item. One is, so let's, I'll be clear, it's currently illegal to build in the public right-of-way, but yet, people have done it, it's all over the city. So what we're, what we'll be doing is, when someone comes in to get an improvement on their property, we will then request that they do, get a revocable encroachment permit. That means that it's releasing the city of all liability of their property in the public right-of-way, and giving them notice that if something has, a utility has to be repaired, we are actually going to repair it. Now, the second, that we're not responsible for the cost for, to take down that particular structure. Now, the other thing is that we're getting requests from residents, as Mr. French said, to improve their property. So people that are coming in, we will be checking to see if they're going to be, if they're, if they're going to build a structure and it's going to obstruct any sort of utility. And so Alan would, he would then review that to say, well, you've got a cable box right at the curb, you can't put a fence to block that cable box. Now, if there's some design where you can get around it, that would be okay. But there may be some, as he said, there may be some cases where you're not going to be able to do it. But what's happening now, the residents that are trying to comply, to come into the city to get a permit, are being told, you can't, you can't get a permit to do that. Now, the, but if you didn't come in to get a permit, and you waited till Sunday where Saturday's, where there's no court enforcement, you have this stuff appearing. So what we're trying to do is actually be able to provide a process. As Mr. French said, not all permits will be issued if it's a serious obstruction of blocking utility access. But we believe that this is the best way to allow this to happen, if it's possible, and also eliminate the city's liability by getting the residents to say, okay, I understand, when they get, when they get the permit.
So are we finding that we are in, I've put ourselves in risk of liability by not going back to those that don't have a permit and are, have built in the public right-of-way? By not going to those residents and requiring them to remove the structures?
Well, I think, and we've probably asked the city attorney for a legal opinion on that, but people are not supposed to put items in that public right-of-way. And if someone hits an item in the public right-of-way, the property owner's going to be liable, and it could be the deep-pocket syndrome where you're trying to get the city to be involved in that. Now, I would say this, my experience after touring the city, the most serious issues are really mailboxes. That would be obstructions versus walls. The walls are behind the sidewalk. We're seeing mailboxes that are actually on the curb. So those are some of the ones that, but I think there, there aren't significant issues, but there's always some concern that you, there are, there is some liability. You have a law that says you can't build there, and someone put something there.
And we're not going back to enforce those that are in the public right-of-way at this time?
We are not, and the goal would be is that when someone comes in for any improvements on the property, we would then do the review at that, at that time.
Councilmember Wilson, you have another question?
Yeah, just a quick one. I think I disagree with the thought pattern that we'd have a release of liability, there's nothing to prove, that'd be the case, but here's, here's what I think. If we were going to do, whether it's a limited encroachment permit, or it's a real one, or anything, or how long it is, or whatever, then let's put them through the same exercise that a public works contractor has to do, and that is, they have to make an agreement that releases a liability for the city specifically, and they'd have to also pay a, or put a bond up and show proof of insurance on their homeowner's insurance that it's covered. Because those three things then will protect the city. If we instead just go through a rubber stamp program, we're complicit.
Sure, sure, understand. And your point's well-taken, and I think in the process for issuing the revocable permit, we do require that the applicant sign, and we record a revocable agreement with the owner that gets recorded, and it's actually untitled for the property. So those recommendations are good, and we're going to comply with those and put them into the process.
If I may add, also, that agreement, we've already
Mr. City Attorney.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, that it does require insurance, homeowner's insurance to cover it. That would be part of the application process. If they can't get that, then they wouldn't get the permit. And I, and as Mr. French has indicated, it's not a rubber stamp. If they can't meet the criteria, even though they've already been there, they'll have to remove it.
Councilmember Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. The thing is, you know, I understand Mr. Wilson's concerns, but also, there's things that the public's coming out, you know, like, they can't put a wall because it missed the criteria by six inches. And it beautifies the property and also makes the property secure, and also, it makes our streets look better. Yeah, we have a lot of mailboxes out there and there in the public right-of-way, that's a trip hazard. I'll use my house as an example. I put in a pool with a retaining wall that was approved by the city, and my retaining wall steps down, goes all the way to the sidewalk. And that, you know, not on the sidewalk, but that was approved by the city, that was about twelve, thirteen years ago, and we had this, engineers come out and look at it. So we had a lot of, I think personally, there's a lot of this, that, and other things, and I think this permit right here, what kind of gut is in the right way to everybody be on the same page. Like Mr. Duffy said, you know, before, we had a code enforcement officer on the weekends, people were doing everything on the weekend, you know, they were putting the walls up, they were doing the roofing, they were doing everything, and, which could be a liability on the city. So I like this idea, I think, you know, there's always a thing to improve, and I think this is one of the improvements to work on this, to beautify the street, make a home more secure, and also gives us control and us out of being liable for it, if something happens, that they have to cover all the costs. As we're not rubber-stamping, now, laws are, cross our Ts and dot our Is, and everything's good to go, and the city attorney approved it. So I think this is a good ordinance to come up with, to kind of give us a control instead of letting everything, everybody just running crazy on it, and just putting up retaining walls, not doing anything. Because it seems like we're, somebody's coming in to do it the right way, like I did, and then they get, oh, you can't do that, or somebody else is doing it the wrong way, and they let them get it. So we have everybody on the same page to do the right thing, you know, this opens up, you know, how would I say, that, you know, that the city's here to work with the residents, and it opens up, you know, dialogue with them to make sure everything's done correct and not having a liability on us. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions for staff at this time? Mayor Protam.
So this is, at least the second time this has come to us. The first, you came to us and said, "Council, how do you feel about this? Should you proceed and bring back an ordinance?" So I'm just going to say, I'm tired of sitting at a meeting and relitigating everything that we already discussed over and over and over again. It would seem to me that this is a public hearing for the public. We already had our discussions. And it seems like we run the risk of, if we don't remember what we did two weeks ago, that we could start voting all over and reversing ourselves. So I just find that we're not having any, I don't know if staff can bring, they don't want to put the time into doing an ordinance unless we're signaling that we're supportive of it.
Mr. City Manager, do you want to respond to that question?
Well, I think, and this is, I mean, it could be, we heard multiple times, we understand that. So having a clear understanding of the council laws, this was a real way to get it. So it's the introduction of an ordinance, it's the second reading, there's going to be a fee associated, so we will see this thing, actually, pretty true.
Right.
But I think we got a understanding from the previous reading, and this was going to be a way of introduction.
Right, and I understand that, but I think for the discipline for ourselves is, that this is really a public hearing for the public to come now and put their input, we've already done ours. So, and I just hope we're not doing it then for the second, well, the second reading shouldn't be necessary.
All right. I have a question. If you would go back to the first slide that you showed, that showed a tree, it looks like the planter around that tree
Yes.
is not where it started off to be when it was probably first put in, and I would imagine because of the kind of tree that was planted, the roots have, have brought the brickwork up.
Split.
Now, if that were subject to a revocable encroachment permit, would part of the permitting process be to look at the kind of tree that was being put in and the planter to ensure that something like that didn't happen? Because to me, the planter and the tree is very nice, but when it ends up in that condition, it's not.
Yes, as part of the process for reviewing the revocable encroachment permit, I do confer with planning to see if what they're proposing would be allowed onsite as well as in the parkway. And should that type of a tree not be amenable, we would not allow it there as well. But as far as, if they were just coming in for planting a tree in the parkway, that may be part of the regular encroachment permit, because I think planting trees in the parkways is allowed. is allowed. But again, at that, for, for that process, we would review the type of tree at that time. So it is reviewed for both permit processes.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, no takers, I'll bring it back to council for their consideration of a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to find the ordinance and categorize exempt from CEQA, is how you say it, C-E-Q-A, review, pursuit to CEQA guidelines, section 15301, class 1, number 2, 3, waiver, future reading, and introduce the ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace. I guess that's California, it looks like it looks California nation, California. Amendment, section 12.04.060, required one, and add chapter 12.10, revocable encrochment permit to title 12 streets, sidewalks, and public places of Grand Terrace municipal code relating to parkway encroachments.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Please vote.
Four, four yeses, one nay, motion passes. Councilmember Wilson votes no. Uh, councilmember Hesse and Raynor vote yes. Mayor Pro Tem votes yes, and the mayor votes yes.
All right, thank you. Move to item 10, which is revised 2011 bond proceeds expenditure agreement. May we have a staff report, please?
Mayor, I'd like to actually take this report to save time. Um, so this item actually appeared before the council, the council approved the potential use of bond proceeds. One of the particular issues, the reason why this came back is because the resolution included, uh, the reference to the 15% that we would be entitled to use in the future. That made the, uh, the state department of finance a little bit nervous. And so they said, no, we're not going to approve it because of that particular line. Misfortune of working with, with the state to be able to cross out that one section, and they, they said they might approve it, but just in case we wanted to come back with the council to have that changed, so we can forward, forward it to the state so they'd be more comfortable, we would be able to have access to those proceeds by, by the end of June.
Okay. Any questions of staff at this time? All right. Anybody in the public like to speak on this item? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I have a motion approval. Uh, let's see, recommended, on the recommendations, city council on behalf of the city, the board of directors of the successor agency, on behalf of successor agency, approve the revised bond proceeds expenditure agreement for the expenditure access 2011 tax allocation bonds between the city of Grand Terrace and the Grand Terrace successor agency in amount of $289,015. Number two, the city council adopt resolution 2017-CC-XX. And three, the successor agency port a top resolution 2017 SA-XX.
All right. So I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmembers Hesse, Wilson, and Raynor vote yes. Mayor Pro Tem votes yes, and the mayor votes yes.
Thank you. To item 11, Clean Street Sweeping Services Eight Month Report.
Just thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Again, my name is Sandra Molina, I'm the Planning and Development Services Director. And, um, Madam Mayor, council, I'll just provide a brief report. In March of 2016, the city council awarded a contract to Clean Street for street sweeping services. Uh, and that included, uh, a new concept for us and, um, a, a new concept with regard to parking enforcement during street sweeping services. So the contract not only included the street sweeping, but, um, also that the street sweeper would do street parking enforcement during this time. This is a new program again for us, and it's not actually being done in very many cities in California. But we, we went through to this program to be more efficient and effective with respect to street sweeping services. Um, and I would tell you that Clean Street, the very first time they swept the streets, it was so dramatically obvious to me that the streets were being cleaned really well. And so with respect to the services of street cleaning, uh, that's been working out really well. With respect to our enforcement, that's been working out very well as, um, also. Um, the vehicle is equipped with a high-resolution camera and, and GPS devices that capture vehicles that are parked on the street. And so as the street sweeper goes by, they're capturing pictures that help us identify the, um, vehicle. The data is electronically, um, sent to the city, and then a code officer reviews, verifies the information, and then issues the citation electronically to our vendor data ticket. Data ticket then sends notices to, uh, the vehicle owner with respect to fine collection. This is just, uh, a photograph of what we get from the, uh, from the street clean bender. They provide us the picture of the vehicle and, uh, with the GPS information, we're able to verify that, yes, that street was scheduled to be cleaned that day. So we can verify that that's correct information. This is another picture of the street sweeper as it's going down the street. We did a comparison with respect to the number of citations that have been issued from July 1st, 2015 to February 28th, 2016. We've issued, at that time, when we were issuing tickets manually, that is, the code enforcement officer followed the street sweeper, we issued 897 tickets. Um, that same time period in 2000, for 2000, July 1st, 2016 to February 28th, 2017, uh, the new program has issued approximately 893 tickets. So, um, we haven't, uh, seen a decrease in the number of tickets thus far, but, you know, the, the goal with enforcement is to have people comply, so at some point, we should be seeing a little bit less tickets being issued. That concludes my presentation. I just wanted to give the council, uh, the information with regard to this new program. Again, um, you, you know, our, our, our vendor is very good at cleaning streets and was very intrigued about our proposal, asking for enforcement through this camera system. They're, they were excited about it and they work with us, and we need a little bit of fine tuning to make it a better, uh, program. But for them, it's a benefit as well, because then they can demonstrate to other cities and perhaps pick up their contracts doing that type of, um, uh, service as well. But with that, council, I conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to respond to any questions.
All right, thank you, Director Molina. Council, have any questions of staff at this time? Okay, seeing none. And do we have any requests to speak on this item? No. All right, this is a receive and file. So thank you very much for your presentation. We will move on to city manager communications.
Yes, Mayor, council, I'll make a brief. All right. So, the city manager's update, just want to give the council an update on SB 1 and the impact for the city of Grand Terrace regarding the new gas tax that was passed. So we annually get about, we're expecting to get about $278,000 in HUTA funds, uh, and highway user tax fund, basically. But with the, as passed with SB 1, uh, we'll be getting an additional for this coming 17, 18 year, an additional $71,000. So we're expected to get $349,491. And that's only a partial payment of what the impact would be. So then the next year, we would, oops, we would end up with a, a, the basic HUTA amount of $283,405. This is a projection from, from the state. And then we would get an additional $211,549. So that would bring a total amount in terms of HUTA funds to about a half a million dollars a year. What Mr. French will do, he will then take these numbers and put them into our five-year capital improvement project, and we'll be able to expedite or accelerate our overall impact. In addition to that, the city would also receive, would potentially receive, there's about $200 million, $200 million in, in the SB 1 for self-help counties. They'll be getting that money, so that will be dispersed, because Seminole is one of the self-help counties. And then there is an additional $400 million for coverts and bridges. So that will be an opportunity for the city to try and access some of those proceeds as part of SB 5. In addition to that, I have one more thing. We are going to do a Midas bus tour. Um, I actually met with a developer and he wanted to go through the city, and the person's in a wheelchair. And I said, we know what we can do, we can get the city's silver liner, take you out and show you the thing. So I thought, why don't we just extend that to any other residents that would like to find out what's happening, and we can take them on this little tour. So this is actually probably released on the, on the, on the web and our Facebook page tonight. It has first come, first served seating. We have 14, 15 seat capacity. And so we'll take you through a, a tour of all of the development that we are anticipating throughout the city. That's going to occur on May 16th from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., so get your reservation. That extends my comments, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Our next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, May 9th, 2017, 6:00 p.m. right here. Agenda item request must be submitted and written to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. I'd like to thank my colleagues for their comments and, um, discussions and, at times, disagreements, because that shows we are not a rubber stamp council. So thank you very much for, for putting your ideas out there, and at this time, we are